For accounting and finance?
Yeah, no, no, for, yeah, for accounting and finance.
Yeah, accounting and finances. Yeah, if I work well here, that's the day after.
Oh, okay, so maybe not.
Yeah.
No, I'll, I'll figure that out. If not, I'll be, maybe Julie can create a site.
You know, at the city manager conference a couple of years ago. That was a good one. Julie and I were there, but they missed my last name.
Looks kind of slummed in this corner.
Yeah.
You'll be right here. I'll just pop that up there across from you.
Yeah, we would make a killing. A little bakery, a little cake job.
Phil Smith Bakery, yes.
Cholera, Colaches.
Colaches, yeah.
Cannoli. I had some real cannoli last summer over there. About this long. About how much can order the?
Over, do you go over there? The real deal. I thought I had a pretty good one in Atlantic City last time I was over in Jersey. But you can probably tell there. Pretty good.
They own the bad. Yeah, they have a big one over there. Back, carry stuff on to the plane. I had my big shopping bags. Italian food for that bakery was incredible.
Can't do that now.
I asked them, I asked them why it can't be used already. They said, sure, there won't be many of them left.
He won't make it off.
Just before I went to flight though.
That's still when you can smoke on the plane too? Might be really big, he's there. That did a, that's a new one. You were smoking on the board in the eighties, yeah.
Now we have one more coming, Charity. Did you get a chance to meet her yet?
I did not.
Okay.
Lucky for her.
Yes.
It was nice to meet her.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
This closed fountain waiting in time.
I know.
Is eighty-two?
It's not warm in the house, just the whole thing being on. We just leave all the windows open and shut down pretty quick.
Still working, thirty-nine, forty-four.
Yeah, it's still good.
You definitely don't want to kill it. You'll wake up to your house being fifty-three. You did that already.
When I started, my first job was in the city. I moved up there. Football coach sent a couple of grand assistants, they don't know how to come out in an hour, they had everything set up. It was about seventy degrees, that's in, this'll pay.
Yeah.
That's there, seven inches of slush snow.
All right.
Yeah.
It's not just a day.
Early day. What is it, heavy stone or anything?
Right, that's right.
It took your call.
Yeah, yeah, it's great. So.
Yes.
He was my favorite.
The father.
And then the father was my second.
Yeah, she said, hey.
You guys, good, good. And he was, he was absolutely.
There you go.
Church was so far.
Okay.
Can I say? Congratulations.
Nikki, that's what we did.
Coast Guard invitation, whatever. Oh, can, can we put that? Is it? Oh, okay. I was curious about where that line lies as far as. Because we thought about hook one and everyone thought. That's going to be like fifty to seventy-five boxes, we're going to use all our cars. Okay, okay, I'll send a message to you. Thank you. I figured you would know. It was great, they were so good.
Well, it was very casual.
You know, we all.
Twenty-five minutes, but.
Really wanted to take the, sixteen, sixteen year.
We did a great campaign.
Said, would you reach out and be just, I would do these things, you know? We'll help you with distribution. But as far as everything else, the ball's in your court, so.
Took the lead on what he wanted, I took that shot.
Yeah.
He even took the lead on what he wanted to do. And he was so non-thankful, he must have been moved because I have that. I just thought this was like, I never.
I think that's a really chance.
I'll just say, yes, yes. Oh, no, can they get a one?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
It's a fire partner.
So good. I told my, I told my wife, I said, I just remembered it on, she just put it on Facebook. She was like, oh.
Nice to meet you.
She said, well, the request for addresses. I guess it's a little bit of surprise when they get it in the mail. I'll cook. Get the garage ready and cook, that's it.
Three trips. They got too deep, they got too deep. We're going to wash your garage. They got all the water, the water stack.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Yes.
So.
Yeah.
Yesterday, yesterday.
Yeah. Wish you could probably get a kit too stacked if you wanted to.
Well, they didn't do it, they put on medicine.
No.
But then I get a call.
Oh, my goodness.
So they probably gave us a picture of both vehicles.
One was naked.
Well, it's a. I thought it was.
Sure. I bet, yeah. It's always fun.
Yeah, it's, right, right.
Now, it's never. It relents to end.
Recording in progress.
Please stand for the pugilism.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call, Jesse.
Ruben.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
The City of Grant abides by the Nebraska Open Meeting Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is on display in the meeting room as required by the Nebraska state law on the South Lawn. The mayor and the city council reserve the right to enter into closed session at any time during the meeting in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meeting Act, even though the closed session may not be indicated on the agenda. It is the intention of the mayor and the city council to take up items on the agenda in the order they are presented. However, we reserve the right to take up matters in a different order to accommodate schedules of the city council. The City of Grant further reserves the right to adjust the order of the items on this agenda. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment may be limited to three minutes per person with a limit of two individuals speaking per topic position. Please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. The City of Grant is recording this meeting. Did everyone get a chance to review the agenda?
Yes. I'll move to set action on the agenda for April eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Charity moved, Andrea second, that we accept the agenda for April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Any discussion? Charity Huddyville?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Review of prior meeting minutes, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion to accept the prior meeting minutes as presented and waive the reading for the meeting on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Kimberly moved, Sam second, that we accept the prior meeting minutes from March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five and waive the reading. Any discussion? Charity Huddyville?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Motion. Communications.
So I had that the tree board will be meeting tomorrow at two P M. The library will have their meeting tomorrow at five fifteen, the library. And then the airport bid for the hanger rehab, the bid opening didn't, they extended, so that will be on April seventeenth at two P M.
Okay, thank you very much. Standing committee reports, Andrew.
The cemetery met tonight and their annual cleanup at the cemetery will be May seventeenth, starting at nine o'clock. They'll run the in brief in the paper on that. And the tree board met a couple, well, three weeks ago. They were going to specify their, sir, the grant to the trees and start getting those out. And then they did their annual park cleanup will be May third, that Saturday at nine o'clock. And I have not confirmed, but Jesse, can you confirm, is Arbor Day May sixth?
I'm not positive.
That's the last I heard, they were not able to do it during Arbor Day that week because Chrissy from the forestry was not able to come. So I think her or her assistant can come May sixth, but we have a meeting tomorrow too, so we'll all know for sure by the next meeting for it happens.
Yes. Very good. Kimberly?
Planning Commission had a meeting on April the first. All but one were in attendance, so they did have quorum and did discuss what we will see in our new business a little bit later this meeting. Several great questions were asked and all present were in favor of moving that forward to us this evening.
Very good, thank you. Charity?
I don't have any quorum.
And Stan?
No.
All right. We do have, it's like enforcement, sure, and water. Anyone have any questions? All right, you want to please note we accept them as presented. Financials, Jesse?
They're in process and so we'll have them for review at the next meeting.
Thank you very much, Jesse. Any public comment this evening? All right, we will move on to action and discussion to replace on the agenda for the park project, sign, flagpole and turnaround. Chris Long.
Jesse was going to do some checking on money. We didn't, I have talked to Brenda, but we did not. We told her she got through tax, that she could, we'd get together. And so we might be on the agenda again in May with cost and design.
Perfect, thank you for the update, appreciate you working on that and keeping us in the loop.
So should we table it to me?
Chris, I'm sorry.
And I got the finance part too. So I looked at the Park and Rec savings and we've had an individual that's been dummying the Park and Rec department. And so there'd be two hundred and fifty dollars there. And then on the lottery, I visited with the individual that we work with. And as I said, we would, currently it is inactive. The last sales was in December of twenty twenty and they picked up equipment in February of twenty twenty-one. So I don't know, like, I'm assuming the twenty twenty date is probably the official date of the tenure, but. So after that inactivity, then you would have to go back to the vote of the people then at that point, so we could close the account at that time then. So this year we had budgeted one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. So it would be whether you wanted to go over that amount, you know, there, you could go over budgeted amount. But we would still potentially want to leave a little bit in for the additional, probably three years of the, because we pay that lottery fee every two years. So otherwise we can pay for it out of the general fund or something like that, but. And then plus that would leave us a little bit in there for. So the account had a balance in it. After visiting on Michelle and stuff, I think because it's a public funds account, it wouldn't completely close, but we'd still want to leave a little bit in there at least. So, and the balance currently for our cash was three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and forty cents. And I did have another application for the lottery that would come forward on the second meeting day. So if you did want Chris to even just apply for the funds, that would also be a possibility. She could have it applied for by the seventeenth of April to be on that. Or I knew that at that point you guys could also, I assume, make that decision.
Or we could apply those funds or something.
Okay. So.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
For the information.
Since there's a request for action, do we go ahead and table this, or does anybody have any other recommendations? Okay. It sounded like May probably would be the next significant update potentially, okay.
And then Bill was good enough to go up and check the electricity. And he said as far as he wanted to go, he thought that maybe that line probably has been cut. So it won't have to be trashed probably. So I will talk to Ryan again and have him look at that. And ask Bill if that'd be a problem for them. And he said, no. Right now, he said, no. So once we get design and, and get everybody back, we'll have a good price for that.
Okay. So May seventeenth?
So thank you.
May thirteenth. Thirteenth? Yep. I will make a motion to go ahead and table the discussion regarding the park projects, the sign flagpole and flagpole and turnaround to the May thirteenth meeting.
Okay. Kimberly moved, Charity second, that we table this agenda item to May thirteenth. Any more discussion? Sam Huddyville?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Motion taken. Thank you guys for all the information, appreciate that. Action and discussion on request by property owner of, and there's the legal there. For conditional use permit to construct a nursing home. And as Kimberly had said, has gone to the planning commission and they did recommend it.
Unanimously.
Yeah.
Fact, with those present.
And I did include everything from a planning commission packet so that at least you guys had all the same information. If you had any additional questions.
Okay. Okay. Did, did you guys have anything you wanted to add besides what's in the package?
If you had any questions for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
There were good questions with the planning commission meeting, I agree with that, so that was a good, good.
Good meeting, yes, it was. I think it's been a really good location.
It is, for sure.
Thank goodness, we had a house this third year.
So some of the things discussed, I guess just to share with the group, that was really great about this plan is that it is absolutely designed for future addition and add-on. If that is something that the community wanted to support and that the facility required. Also staff parking in the back of the building, so any kind of comings or goings would be, you know, more geared towards the backside of the building instead of the front side, which is, sets across from some residential. And then also, as you can see, it sets back on the property line even from that street across from residential homes. And so any concerns that, that were discussed there have kind of been addressed by the planning and the outline of the building itself. Talked a little bit about drainage, I think, as well, and did not have any concerns with how it was placed and where the plans were for drainage.
All good things.
All good things. Very exciting.
Is a, is a walking path going to be open to the community or just for the residents?
Open to the community.
That will be awesome.
Because that's actually something that has come into Park and Rec a couple of times, so it's nice to have a combination of both.
Yeah.
We have a secret dream that we'd love to connect it over by Westview, so that people from Westview could actually, but we'd have to talk to a few people to make that. Mark and I drive by and we hear that. That's a, that's a dream of dreams. We all have those dreams. That would be awesome.
Yeah. Well, you got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
And, and dream is usually the best place to start.
Please give your consent, is that basically all we have to say on that? Is.
Conditional use.
Conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we accept the condition, conditional use permit to construct a nursing home on the drive lot to Western Sky Community Care Center.
Same.
Andrew, your move, Sam second, that we move forward with a conditional use permit to construct the nursing home on Lot A for the Western Sky Community Care Center. Any discussion?
Yeah, thanks for all the work you guys have done, made this happen, it's, it's awesome.
It is exciting. Kimberly, Huddyville?
Yes.
Charity?
Yes.
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Good one.
Thank you.
All right, action and discussion, request on the agenda, competition on nuisance program for twenty twenty-five, Edward Dunn.
All right, let me get this back up here. And then I do have, just to hand out some of the slides themselves. Some of them are a little bit wordy.
Thank you.
I want to review them later. Okay, so how long do I have, Madam Mayor?
Just enough.
Just enough? All right, my name is Edward Dunn, spelled E D W A R D D U N N for the record. I reside at five four four Garfield Avenue. I'm here representing West Central Nebraska Development District as their executive director to discuss the nuisance abatement program. Before I do that, and the reason, I talked to Jesse after the last city council meeting, you know, you have incoming new city superintendent, and I'm sure Al's familiar with this program in some way, shape or form at some point in his lengthy career as a consultant.
We had.
As well as a city.
We had it in northeast.
Perfect, good, good, and you're familiar with it. You know that West Central was the flagship for this out of the.
Of course.
Regional development district, so. First, I wanted to talk to you about West Central in general, and then we'll get into the nuisance. West Central Nebraska Development District, we are more than just nuisance abatement, even though I'm going to talk tonight about nuisance abatement. When you hear West Central Development District, you might think of nuisance abatement, addressing abandoned properties or code violations. But as I said just a moment ago, we are more than that. We're a regional catalyst for growth, serving eighteen counties and fifty-eight incorporated communities across western Nebraska. Our mission is simple, empower our communities to thrive through strategic partnerships and innovative solutions. While we do help communities address nuisance properties and revitalize neighborhoods, that is just one tool in our extensive toolkit. We specialize in turning challenges into opportunities. We offer grant writing and administration that has secured millions of dollars for local infrastructure projects. Our housing rehabilitation programs have transformed neighborhoods and improved quality of life for families across our region. Our professional planning services help communities chart a sustainable future while our economic development initiatives create jobs and foster entrepreneurship. As your development district, we bring economies of scale to rural communities. We provide expertise that would be impossible for individual small towns to maintain at a staff level. We're able to leverage regional relationships with state and federal agencies to navigate complex regulatory environments. And perhaps most importantly, we share innovations and best practices across communities, helping your successful solutions spread throughout western Nebraska. We are not a distant bureaucracy, we are your neighbors working alongside you. Our team understands the unique challenges of rural Nebraska because we live them too. We tailor our approach to each community's specific needs, whether that's downtown revitalization, workforce housing development, or infrastructure financing. Community development is not about quick fixes, it's about building foundations for generational prosperity. We're committed to the long-term success of western Nebraska, developing strategies that will benefit our communities for decades to come. West Central Nebraska Development District is not just about fixing problems, we are about realizing potential. We see possibilities where others see obstacles. We are your partner in building a stronger, more resilient, and more prosperous, prosperous community across western Nebraska. Let us work together to create the future our region deserves. Okay. So, we will start here.
Does the chair go up?
I just put my. Ah, there it goes, just have to unfreeze it. Okay, all right, what is the nuisance abatement story? Born in two thousand and seven with the visionary support of Creighton University School of Law, the Sulan Interstate Metro Planning Council, and with the legal oversight of Phil Pierce, who some of you are familiar with. This program stands as a beacon of transformation and justice in your community. This will be the only slide I read, or read, or rest of them, I will not. We champion the administrative approach to code enforcement, swift, decisive, and unwavering in our mission to eradicate nuisances that plague your neighborhoods. Every decision we make is rooted in fairness and impartiality, ensuring that justice is not just served, but seen and felt by all. We are more than enforcers, we are builders of pride, guardians of galaxies, safety, sorry, and architects of sustainable future. Our work brings life into the very soul of your community, fostering a sense of belonging and a shared vision of beauty and order. Our mission is area-driven, not complaint-driven. We take a parcel-by-parcel approach in the selected area, relentlessly pursuing a cleaner, safer, and more vibrant environment for all. From dead trees that choke the life of our streets to discarded goods that mar our landscapes, from dilapidated, dilapidated structures that whisper decay, to unlicensed or inoperable vehicles that. to unlicensed or inoperable vehicles that screen neglect, we tackle it all. This is not just code enforcement. This is a revolution, a movement to assist you in reclaiming your community, one parcel, one block, one street, one home at a time. Together we rise, together we thrive. Okay, why nuisance abatement matters? Property abatement directly protects community members by eliminating multiple safety threats. Beyond the obvious structural hazards that could cause physical injury, abatement addresses hidden dangers like fire risk from debris and flammable materials. Abatement creates a powerful economic ripple. Not only do adjacent properties immediately regain five to fifteen percent of their market value, but the improvement often triggers a neighborhood-wide enhancement cycle as other owners invest in their own properties. Most importantly, these stabilized property values protect the community's tax base, ensuring consistent funding for essential services that benefit all residents. Property abatement is a powerful tool for disrupting the deterioration of cycle described in the broken window theory. When small issues like overgrown lawns or abandoned vehicles are promptly addressed, they prevent the visual signals that invite further neglect and even criminal activity. Abatement directly tackles numerous public health threats that extend beyond individual properties. By eliminating standing water, accumulated garbage, and other conditions where disease vectors thrive, the process prevents mosquito-borne illnesses and rodent infestations that can infect entire neighborhoods. Property abatement creates an immediate visual transformation that resonates deeply with residents and visitors alike. Beyond simple aesthetics, the visible improvement sends a powerful message that the community values both its appearance and the well-being of its people. Property abatement serves as a foundation for long-term economic development by addressing multiple factors that influence business decisions. Well-maintained communities create the quality of life conditions necessary to attract and retain skilled workers, a critical consideration for businesses seeking new locations. There are three main enforcement procedures, which are detailed in your codebook ad nauseam. The administrative procedure is the one that we follow, the one that Grant has followed for many years. There is a second. It is the penal court enforcement procedure, and the third being the civil court procedure. Both, I'm sure, Tana can fill you in on all the funness that happens in the penal and civil court side of things. The administrative procedure represents our primary enforcement strategy because it delivers the most efficient path to compliance while minimalizing costs for all parties involved. This municipally managed process follows a structured workflow of formal declarations, notifications, and hearings that ensure due process while avoiding court proceedings. Most times. The approach's flexibility allows us to tailor responses to specific situations while keeping the focus on achieving compliance rather than punishing violators. When administrative approaches prove insufficient, we maintain the two powerful judicial enforcement options, those being the penal court enforcement procedure and the civil court procedure. Next, we'll talk about the legal framework. The nuisance abatement ordinance serves as a critical legal foundation for all enforcement actions. Your carefully structured document does far more than simply define what constitutes nuisance. It establishes the municipality's legal authority to intervene, outlines the specific procedural steps required for enforcement, and ensures these powers remain within state statutory limitations. Without this comprehensive legal framework, enforcement actions would be vulnerable to legal challenges that could undermine the entire abatement program and potentially expose the municipality to liability. A well-crafted nuisance ordinance creates the delicate balance between effective enforcement and constitutional due process protections. Nebraska state statutes provide municipalities with clear authority to address nuisance conditions while establishing specific procedural requirements that must be followed. Section eighteen dash seventeen twenty grants the fundamental power to define, regulate, and suppress nuisances while complementary statutes address specific issues like abandoned vehicles and special assessment liens for recovery of abatement costs. Your nuisance abatement process incorporates multiple layers of due process protections that balance effective enforcement with property owners' constitutional rights. Key players in the nuisance abatement. The nuisance abatement process relies on a structured network of officials with clearly defined roles and responsibilities. Governing Board, your body here, the nuisance officer, West Central Nebraska Development District, the property owners and tenants, the attorney of record, and as well as the community resources, which you guys do a very good job of providing year-round community cleanup efforts with the roll-off. So that's kudos to Grant. I'll say after giving this speech, probably more than a dozen times now, not all communities have that option to them. They have a once-a-year cleanup that just comes in, and a lot of them are villages who can't afford to maintain a year-round roll-off. So again, it's a feather in your cap to have that year-round resource available to the residents of Grant. What constitutes nuisance? I'm not going to read all these. These are all straight from your codebook. I copied and pasted. We know these. We've lived these. We've seen these. And here are a couple of examples. These are not your community. These are just examples of what a nuisance might look like, what an unlicensed vehicle might look like, and then again, more nuisance. Next, we'll get into the process. The nuisance abatement process begins with two critical steps, which you have already... Actually, the first three steps. The adoption of an ordinance, which you already have in your codebook that's codified. The appointment of a nuisance officer, which you do annually, and the area being identified, which also you have done through the PSA. The cost and formula agreement, again, that's the PSA which you guys have already signed, and I appreciate that. Next is kind of where we're at here, the public information campaign. Steps five and six were contained in to create both public awareness and administrative preparedness. The public information campaign transform enforcement from a surprise intrusion to an anticipated community improvement initiative. By announcing the program, explaining nuisance definitions, and providing voluntary compliance resources, like your roll-offs, the municipality creates opportunities for property owners to address issues before formal enforcement begins. Simultaneously, the nuisance officer conducts critical behind-the-scenes preparation, aligning inspection schedules with board meeting dates, preparing assessment templates, and coordinating with municipal staff. Which I don't need to tell you this, but Jesse's a frickin' rough starter. Okay. The windshield assessment phase establishes the critical evidentiary foundation for potential enforcement actions while protecting both property owners' rights and the municipality's legal position. By restricting initial observations to public rights-of-way only. Say that again. Our observations are taken from public rights-of-way only. We do not leave the vehicle. None of my staff leave their vehicle. They don't turn around in your driveway. They stay in the alleys, and they stay on the public rights-of-way. The standardized checklist methodology creates consistency across all properties, eliminating claims of selective enforcement or bias. Steps eight and nine transform initial observations into legally defensible case files through meticulous documentation and ownership verification. Each property will receive a unique case number with chronologically maintained records that create a clear timeline of events and communications. The multi-source approach to ownership verification that we will use going through GIS workshop, Nebraska Taxes Online, and county records ensure accurate identification of all legally responsible parties. This thorough research process identifies both property owners and tenants, all of whom will receive property verification. The verification of parcel numbers and legal descriptions further strengthens the municipality's position by ensuring all legal notices correctly identify the property in question. The abatement process next takes a carefully structured communication approach designed to maximize voluntary compliance. Step ten's courtesy letter. Step ten's courtesy letter represents our first formal contact. We're at step ten, and we're just now creating our first formal contact. There's so much behind the scenes that goes on to get to that step, that it took to step ten to even realize it, so. It's our first formal contact, yet deliberately avoiding threatening language or immediate board involvement. These letters contain, will contain, a strategic combination of elements, specific ordinance references that establish legal authority, photographic evidence that eliminates dispute about conditions, clear compliance deadlines that create urgency, and resource information that offers assistance pathways.
Now, I've heard of other towns, they don't do this whole courtesy letter. They just go put a little notice in the yard. That's the first time the homeowner gets notice.
You are correct. There are communities who handle their own nuisance, and we take a... We take a more thoughtful approach to this, rather than just...
Publicly...
Putting a post in the front yard and saying, "You've got a nuisance. Figure it out."
Yeah.
We are going to detail what that nuisance is, how to clear that nuisance, or to get the property into compliance, as well as a complete set of the step-by-step process, not as outlined here with all the bullets, but the steps will be in that mailer as well with the courtesy, so they know the exact timeline. Steps eleven and twelve represent the critical transition from voluntary compliance to official enforcement action. The second assessment creates an updated documentation that shows either progress or continued violations, with this evidence compiled into a comprehensive presentation for the governing board, which you've all seen before. The formal declaration of nuisance by resolution transforms the situation from a staff-level concern to an official municipal action with significant legal implications. By requiring individual resolutions for each property with separate votes, board members will review the specific evidence for each case, rather than approving multiple properties without proper consideration, which you've all been pretty good at before. Step thirteen elevates the enforcement process to formal legal action through the declared nuisance level. These communications serve multiple essential functions beyond simple notification. They establish incontrovertible evidence of due process by including the official resolution and as well as creating another opportunity to voluntary compliance before escalation and clearly outline the property owner's legal rights regarding the show cause hearing. Steps fourteen and fifteen demonstrate the municipality's commitment to both procedural fairness and positive reinforcement through the enforcement process, positive reinforcement throughout the enforcement process. The show cause hearing provides property owners with a formal opportunity to dispute findings or request extensions with strict timelines, ensuring these hearings occur promptly without unnecessarily delaying enforcement. Equally important is the resolution to resend for properties that achieve compliance after formal declaration. This step officially removes the nuisance designation through the same board action that established it, creating complete documentation of case resolution. Step sixteen represents the next significant milestone in escalation. The governing board formally authorizes the expenditure of municipal funds to remediate nuisance conditions. This motion to abate slash expend funds transforms the process from administrative declarations to concrete action with financial implications for both the municipality and property owners. The board must select the appropriate type of motion based on specific conditions, general abatement for debris and vehicle removal, property inspection, or potential structural issues, or structural review for possible demolition. Those will both stem from your board help. Each category triggers different procedural requirements and potentially different contractors, making this careful categorization essential for proper execution. Step seventeen fulfills the statutory five-day notice requirement mandate... Sorry. Before the municipality can physically enter the private property to form an abatement and order designated contract. Actual abatement. Step eighteen represents the culmination of the entire enforcement process. This action must follow strict protocols to ensure both safety and legal compliance. The presence of law enforcement is non-negotiable during enforcement. I'm going to say it again. The presence of law enforcement is non-negotiable during the abatement process. That is, I stress safety with my staff. If law enforcement is unwilling to participate in or be present, we will come make that presentation to the board and let you choose how you wish to proceed. I know that we have implemented a application procedure over the last couple of years to apply to begin the nuisance program. Part of that application next year will include a signature by your law enforcement, so in this case, Perkins County Sheriff's Office. The complete nuisance process... Sorry, the complete nuisance abatement process demonstrates how effective enforcement combines progressive escalation with multiple compliance opportunities to achieve results while minimizing confrontation. The statistics tell the story. Approximately seventy-five percent of property owners comply immediately after receiving the courtesy letter. With additional compliance after formal declaration, leaving actual abatement as a relatively rare occurrence. This high compliance rate validates the process design, showing that clear communication, documented evidence, and structured enforcement create the motivation for voluntary action in most cases.
I think we have a ninety-five percent compliance rate for abatement actually in our town.
That's our program-wide, but yes.
Yeah, but we're at ninety-five percent at first step eighteen, so. So I'd say we're over two percent in this town, so.
The thirty- and five-day notice process provides a specialized enforcement pathway for addressing abandoned vehicles and mobile homes that balance property rights with effective nuisance abatement. This procedure follows specific statutory requirements that create a clear title transfer mechanism. The initial thirty-day notification period provides ample opportunity for owners to claim or resolve issues before the subsequent five-day final notice. Again, this process applies to abandoned vehicles and mobile homes. Challenges and solutions. The nuisance abatement process anticipates and addresses six primary challenges through targeted solutions. Property owner resistance. Often the most visible obstacle, it diminishes significantly through comprehensive education about both requirements and assistance resources. The challenge of accurate ownership determination, critical for legal notice requirements, is overcome through redundant verification... Will be overcome with redundant verification methods, including GIS systems, the tax records, and county documents. Timeline management challenges are addressed through careful scheduling that aligns with municipal meeting calendars and statutory notice periods. Legal compliance concerns are mitigated through strict adherence to the local ordinance, state statutes, and any and all federal requirements, creating defensible enforcement actions. Weather-related challenges that can compromise assessment accuracy and abatement access are resolved through seasonal planning that concentrates enforcement during optimal conditions. Finally, resource limitations are overcome through strategic community partnerships that expand capacity beyond the municipal staff capabilities. Successful nuisance abatement program establishes robust support structures that facilitate voluntary compliance rather than relying primarily on enforcement. The community roll-off with strategically... Sorry, with strategically placed community roll-offs, you can continue this method of voluntary compliance. Partnerships with local service clubs to create volunteer assistance for elderly is an option that I've seen in other communities that's working well. We have a great ministerial staff association here, the Lions, the Burgery. There's several local service organizations that you guys can reach out to. These support systems serve multiple purposes beyond facilitating compliance. They demonstrate municipal commitment to assisting rather than punishing residents, create community investment in the abatement process, and often generate cost savings by reducing the need for formal enforcement actions. The nuisance abatement process incorporates specific success indicators that allow municipalities to track effectiveness. One that Mr. Sims already mentioned with a ninety-five percent or whatever he quoted. I'm going to hold you to that. I'm going to go check.
It was ninety-six. We had ninety-four, then we had a ninety-six, so I'm going to go with the average of ninety-five.
The primary metric is properties clearing voluntarily.
Yeah.
That is our biggest metric that we use to track success. So you hit the nail on the head before I even got to it. And then here are some examples, again, not in Grant, of what a nuisance might look like, and then what it can look like afterwards. Everything is neatly stacked. The area is clean. Nothing is holding water, and it overall represents a renewed life in that property. Again, here, show you what it looks like before and what it looks like after. Again, we're no longer... Again, we're no longer harboring those pests, whether they be rodents, mosquitoes, et cetera. We've now cleaned up that property, and it looks much better. Promissible. The nuisance base, the nuisance abatement program's success rests firmly on its commitment to procedural integrity at every step. The fair and impartial review of properties begins with the critical protocol that nuisance officers never trespass on private property, conducting all initial assessments from public right-of-way only. The approach not only protects our property owner's constitutional rights, but also ensures that all evidence collected remains legally admissible should cases progress to formal hearings or court proceedings. The administrative approach prioritizes efficiency while maintaining thorough documentation and multiple compliance opportunities, creating a system that respects both community standards and individual property rights. This balanced methodology explains why the program has achieved such remarkable compliance rates without excessive reliance on costly court proceedings or forced abatements. The program's twenty, twenty-four statistics tell a powerful story of both scale and effectiveness that validates the administrative approach. In twenty twenty-four, over nineteen thousand properties were reviewed. The program has, not in Grant, overall, all of it's central. The program has demonstrated capacity to address nuisance conditions across entire communities. The declaration of two thousand three hundred and one properties as nuisance represents systematic identification of problematic conditions, while the fact that only one hundred and twenty of those properties, a mere five point two, were actually declared nuisances and required actual abatement demonstrates the program's extraordinary success in achieving voluntary compliance. Perhaps the most impressive is the removal of eighty-three unsafe structural, unsafe structures from, from communities. That was in twenty twenty-four. Proud to say none of those were in Grant. Each representing the elimination of significant public safety hazard that posed risk to neighboring properties and community members. These concrete outcomes demonstrate how a well-structured administrative approach transforms community aesthetics, protects property values, and eliminates public health hazards far more efficiently than traditional enforcement methods. You can't see that, but that's my contact information. Any questions?
Very good reminder of why we do this program.
Well, again, thank you for the opportunity to represent West Central and speak on the nuisance program. I'm pleased to announce that Ashley Diamond will continue to be your nuisance officer for the twenty twenty-five season. She, she should be reaching out to Jesse, and Jesse, once you get emails and everything else established, I'll have her reach out to the city superintendent, so that she can introduce herself formally. I've also implemented a teams approach this year, so none of my staff are all female. And nothing against female nurses, it's not a sexist remark, okay? A lot of them can whip my butt. But there's safety in numbers, and for, for safety reasons, all reviews will be done in a team method. So, there will be two individuals from my staff at all reviews.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Gunn? Thank you, appreciate your, your time and your representation.
Thanks, guys. Oh, wait. I always have more.
Oh, one more.
You didn't miss it. We, last year, we had nine properties. This year, we're reviewing, or sorry, nine communities. This year, we are reviewing eleven communities. Our goal is around twelve every year. That's what I think our staff can handle. So, we're, we're pleased to continue those services across our entire eighteen county region. It's, it's all the way Grant, Hooker, Thomas, Cleardown, and Dundee, you know, wherever Furness, and then up to Dawson County. So, we cover a lot of swath, swath of land, so. Thank you.
Very good.
All right. I will move on to the Arbor Day official proclamation. In eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for planting of trees, and this holiday is called Arbor Day. Was first observed in the plenty of, of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and now Arbor Day is observed throughout the nation and the world. Trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cutting heat, and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And trees are a renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business area, and beautify the community. And trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. I, the mayor of the city of Grant, therefore do proclaim Friday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, as Arbor Day in the city of Grant, Nebraska. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support the efforts to protect our trees, our woodlands. And I urge further, all citizens to plant trees to broaden the heart and promote the well-being of this fine and future, the well-being of this fine and future generations. And I will sign this.
To the motion to approve that proclamation?
Well, just to offer a signature.
The mayor can't do it again. Very well, we'll let you sign it. I will make a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the proclamation of Arbor Day.
To remove Andrea's second that the mayor may sign the mayoral proclamation of Arbor Day. Any discussion? Charity, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Very good. All right. Speaking of signatures, so this is back on the agenda because we need you to operate and need to sign the city superintendent employment contract. It's very similar to the last contract. You have any questions? I'm sure probably a couple.
Do we see, we, there's no date on the back of it, so we need to, we have to date, so it's kind of on, only on the motion.
There are dates on the first.
Maybe you should go ahead and look at that.
Yeah, she signed it today, then she'll just, like, she'll, she'll sign it on today's date.
Okay, we don't, we don't, we don't have a second date. I'll make a motion to accept the mayoral appointment of Derek Bergman as city superintendent and authorize the mayor to sign this agreement or his contract.
An employment contract.
His employment contract.
Second. Sam moved and charity second that authorizing the mayor to sign the employment contract. Any discussion? Andrea, first thing, Sam?
Yes.
Charity?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Action and discussion on mayoral appointment of Derek Bergman as city superintendent beginning April ninth and term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, which we will renew.
We accept action on mayoral appointment of Derek Bergman as city superintendent for the city of Grant beginning April ninth, twenty twenty-five, term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Charity move. Kimberly second that we move forward the mayoral appointment of Derek Bergman as city superintendent. Any discussion? Kimberly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Charity?
Yes.
Andrea?
First thing.
Sam?
Yes.
Motion carries. Action and discussion on mayoral appointment for Derek Bergman as deputy city ch- deputy clerk treasurer beginning April ninth, twenty twenty-five, ending term December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve mayoral appointment of Derek Bergman as deputy clerk, such treasurer, beginning four ninth, twenty twenty-five, and a term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Sam moved, charity second, to accept the mayoral appointment of Derek Bergman as deputy clerk treasurer. Any discussion? Sam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andrea?
Kimberly? Yes.
Charity?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Did everyone have a chance to review bills and claims?
Yes.
On the set, action on bills and claim in an amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second. Charity moved, Andrea second, that we accept bills and claims in an amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Any discussion? Andrea, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Charity?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Motion carried. We are adjourned at seven fifty-four. Thank you everyone for attending.
Yeah, our permits all in line. You've got it. We're, we're right at the very end of pushing that through, so hopefully, we're gonna break ground later this month. We've still got a few more things we have to sign, but we're getting there.
Recording stopped.
Our money is, our money is obligated. We're fine. We're having to get through all the red tape.
Thank you so much.
To you, you're right.
You're right.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks.
I appreciate everything you did.
Yes, we're gonna get there.
You solved a problem, and you just came up with a great solution.
Well, all of us made it.